I'd like to call it a order, the April 5th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 6:00 we had a work session with the folks from the YMCA. They presented a floor plan and think the community is going to be pretty happy when they see that. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Randy Blanchard from Fillmore to lead us in the invocation.
Good evening. Let us join our hearts and minds together in prayer. Gracious and most merciful Father, Creator of the universe and giver of all good things, we give you thanks especially this night for our home which we call Currituck County. We pray for those who stand before us as leaders and commissioners. We pray for their insight and wisdom and their understanding. Help them that they may be able to know what is the greatest good to do and the benefits of what they do might be a blessing to all those around us. For this we pray in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible and free of any doubt.
Item 1 is approval of agenda. I need to add a couple of items to the consent agenda. I'd like to add a resolution opposing the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries, new rules on gill net fishing. And number 2, a resolution in support of North Carolina's current public alcohol beverage control system. And then item 11A, an overview of the PUDs in the Corolla area.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. A second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. First item is, or second item is public comment. First person we have signed up is Andy Keeney. Mr. McCray, you are in charge of the clock at 3 minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And with that, I ask you to state your name and address for the record, sir.
Evening, Commissioners. I'm Andy Keeney, 6008 Currituck Road in Kitty Hawk. I hope that all of us living in North Carolina will support the only remaining AAC team and that's why I'm wearing my Duke tie. Quickly, I'm here also on behalf of Drew Meredith, the Corolla Water Parks. And I sent to the Vice Chairman, and you all received a letter asking for you to put back on your agenda the rezoning of PB 8756 Monterey Shores PUD. Your rules allow any member with a timely request to go ahead and put an item on the agenda. For the first reason being is that it was previously acted upon reconsideration which was not a proper procedural method for you to undertake. The second reason was is that there was then and continues to be controversy over the title. As you well know, Carolina water at the last minute raised some issues and those, to my knowledge, have still not been resolved. The agenda was requested upon by a corporation that is not in good standing. Monterey Shores, Inc. has not filed an annual report for eight years. The letter requesting the agenda item was by Robert DeGabriel, never signed, and who is Robert DeGabriel? It doesn't reflect him being with Monterey Shores, Inc. There have been allegations that the apartment owners, which are real condominiums, did not receive proper notice. When I received documents on Friday, it turns out that the agenda item was not posted and not requested to go to the newspaper until approximately 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, but the deadline was 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday. It appears that the numbers still are not confirmed, ratified, and certified. Any Commissioner with timely notice can put this item back on the agenda. As I was driving to this meeting, I saw signs from Commissioner Nels, I saw signs from Commissioner Gregory. I know that you want the public to be heard. What is the downside of having another public hearing to consider this rezoning issue? As you know, there were over 50 people here before. They were all denied the right to be heard and I'm asking for this to be put back on the agenda, reconsider it, vote it up or down, but at least let the people be heard. That's what they want. They don't want battles between lawyers. The last election that you had, there was debates over hundreds of thousands of dollars, unnecessary litigation. Why not let the people be heard? Let's have another public hearing. I have received a letter sent to me by email today at 5:45 from Ike. I've not read the letter. I was on my way here and it was sent by computer, so I don't know what it said, but again, we're having lawyers get involved. You were elected to represent the people. I ask that you allow the people to be heard. Let's not let lawyers take over. Let's not spend unnecessary legal money. All we want is another public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCray, could you please comment on, I believe we did hold a public hearing and we did have people sign up to speak?
Yes, I completed a letter late this afternoon and I sent it via electronic mail and also United States mail. It'll go out tomorrow as a United States mail to Mr. Keeney in response to his request that this matter be placed back on the board's agenda for consideration. Bottom line, I explained in my letter, there is no basis upon which this board may reconsider the matter. If you'd like me to go into further detail and address each of his points, I'd be glad to at this point, but I provided each of you with a copy of my letter as well.
That's satisfactory. Thank you. Next, we have David Palmer. Ask you also, please, give your name and address for the record.
David Palmer, 3861 Carrotto Highway, Greater Downtown Barco. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I had signed up to speak, but after talking with a couple of the Commissioners, I'd like to hold it over to another meeting, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That'll be fine. That's all I had, sign up to speak.
I didn't get a chance to sign up. I came in late.
Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record.
John Snowden, 180 Maple Road. I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. I'm about to lose my voice, which is probably a relief to some of y'all. I'd like to thank Ms. Taylor for pointing out at the last meeting that we have some rogue Commissioners. As far as bullying staff members and all, there's no place for that in county government, no place for that in any government, as a matter of fact. That's my comment on that. I came tonight, aside from that, to thank Mr. Peter Bishop, Owen Etheridge, Ben Woody, for supporting our grant application to Raffi to operate farm plots on our farm in Maple. As many of you know, I am part-time farmer, used to publish the paper, and I'm a full-time database administrator now. We received a $10,000 grant to operate farm plots as a example use of open space and farmland in Maple. Mr. Woody, Owen Etheridge, and the Economic Development Director, they all wrote really nice letters for me on that, letters of approval and support. The other Commissioners, I spoke with Paul O'Neil, John Rohr, and Janet also knew about it, and they had given me verbal support. It's just I didn't want to carry a whole sheet of letters up there. We competed against 30 other counties in the coastal plain for four grant positions. These are for small-time producer grants. And the way it works is we're trying to prove a point that you can use open space for community farming and you can use small tracts of agricultural land. And what this will do is give a lot of the people in Currituck who are growing vegetables another source of income. They can rent farm plots to people in their communities and they can come out and basically shovel-ready agriculture. You come out and rent a plot from us or one of the other farmers who does it in the future and you can grow your own food. You don't have to worry about going somewhere and getting tainted food from somebody. But once again, I can't thank enough Commissioner Etheridge, the Economic Development Director, and Mr. Woody, because they really, I mean, they, you know, they put in words how this would work for the community and that's what they're supposed to do, is support small business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden. This is one night I wish you weren't losing your voice. That's all we have, signed up for the public comment. Is anyone else hearing none? Does any Commissioners have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment. Mr. Chairman, this Thursday, I had the great honor of following a cavalcade at 3:00 in the morning from Norfolk, Virginia, Holland Brown Funeral Home to Arlington National Cemetery. A friend of mine, 20-year Navy veteran, was buried. I just wish to share to you one of the things that brought tears to all of our eyes. We had 28 bikes that followed Mike's Kason all the way to Arlington. And I want you to know, my wife and I and all the rest of us that rode there saw probably 30 groups of schoolchildren from maybe the 3rd grade to the high school grade. And as that Kason passed with his coffin and the American flag draped over it, I replied to my wife, "Look, every child there had his right hand over his heart in honor to that young man." And that's the type of news that doesn't make the newspapers or the TVs, but I want to thank all of the teachers out there and all the parents out there that teach their children the pride and the respect and the democracy and in this country that was shown that day on Mike Ulrich's service ceremony. And I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to have one quick before we get to the end of the meeting, people to turn us off, but since our last meeting, we've had a very dear lady that passed away, Ms. Brenda Clayman. She wrote for the Daily Advance for many, many years, focusing mainly on Currituck County. She was very involved in her community and this county as a whole, for example, with the Arts Council. And just on behalf of the board, give our sympathy to that family. Very young, very nice, always wrote a fair story, did wonderful coverage on Currituck County, and we are gonna miss her a lot.
Thank you. I think the board would definitely share those sentiments. Brenda, as several of her other reporters, they care about their community. And she not only reported on her community, she lived in her community and she was active in her community and she cared about her fellow neighbors and she was very active in a lot of nonprofit things that were good for the community. And the Daily Advance lost a good reporter. Currituck County lost a great citizen and I think all of us can say we lost a good friend.
Thank you.
Oh, let me just say, they don't make them and they don't come no better than Brenda Clayman. She was just lost to this county.
I think a memorial service is gonna be on the 10th, which will be Saturday.
Next Saturday, I think at 3:00.
3:00 at Mount Zion United Methodist Church. Anyone else hearing none? I'm enclosed a public hearing. Item 3 is presentation on Fair Housing Month and adoption of proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your agenda package a request from the Northeastern CDC to join them in partnering with several other local government organizations in northeast North Carolina proclaiming that April is Fair Housing Month. And you've got a resolution in your agenda package to so proclaiming. And we're asking tonight if you would please consider adopting that resolution.
All right, we have a motion from the board to adopt this.
Sign them.
I have a motion to adopt. I have a second. Second from Commissioner Gregory. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Was there anybody in the audience that was supposed to speak to this?
Yes, there is. Ms. Carolyn Anderson is with us, but I think she's asked if we would present on her behalf, but she is with us tonight.
We want to thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you taking an active interest in making sure that folks in Currituck County have a fair and reasonable place to live.
I'll thank all of you for adopting this on behalf of Currituck County.
Thank you very much. Do I sound like I'm echoing out there? Does it sound okay? Okay. Item 4, Wayne Harris and Dave Whitmer to discuss a program with the Northeastern Workforce Development to help students prepare for careers. Mr. Scanlon?
We have from us, representatives from, I believe, the Albemarle Commission, who have asked to come forward tonight to talk about some initiatives with workforce development. And with that, I'll turn that over to you.
Right, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Wayne Harris, Director of the Albemarle EDC, and Dave Whitmer is Business Service Representative with Northeast Workforce Development, which is part of the Albemarle Commission. And we just wanted to bring you up to date at what we think is a real crossroads for our region and a unique opportunity. As you know, we have an aviation park in Elizabeth City that has been very successful. We have a 63-acre park. We have four hangar sites in that park. We have 15 acres in the park devoted to training facilities that we don't yet have for COA and ECSU, School of Aviation Science. We already have two 80,000-square-foot hangars, a 10,000-square-foot machine shop adjacent to the park. Each hangar employs about 110 people at an average salary of 48,500, which is about 85% above the county average in our county. So this has been a very successful park. Really what kind of triggered the coalition I'm gonna tell you about was a Golden Leaf study that was done back in June where they noted that there were already 11,000 aviation workers in North Carolina. There will be another 5,000 to 6,000 who will be needed in the next seven to 10 years. And like the jobs at our airpark, these are very high-paying jobs. Golden Leaf identified Elizabeth City, or Passau County, actually, as one of four areas that had developed a highly concentrated aviation cluster. But Golden Leaf worried about the ability to train folks to take these jobs that are going to be developed and the lack of what they called an aviation culture in our region. Although the Wright Brothers sailed or had their historic flight not far from here, there was not in Golden Leaf's view, and I think this is probably true, the kind of culture you have in a place like Wichita when you've had manufacturing and MRO for decades and decades and kids coming out of school naturally understand that that's an avenue to a high-paying job. And additionally, because of the budget shortfall, both the ECSU School of Aviation Science and the College of Albemarle Airframe and Power Plant Maintenance Program, those facilities have been delayed indefinitely because of the budget shortfall at the state level. And so our concern is that we think the aviation jobs still will come here, but if we don't manage to develop this culture of aviation and get this AMP program in particular in place, that the jobs will go to people who live in the Hampton Roads area and commute down here to fill them if we don't have a way to train them. So really Lloyd Griffin, who's on the Albemarle Commission, has really been doing most of the heavy lifting on this, but we have managed to make some progress. COA has a stopgap sheet metal program. It's a seven-week beginning program. It can train 12 people at a time and it has a waiting list of 120 people. So that gives you some idea of the demand out there for this kind of training. Also, we, COA was able to receive about a month and a half ago, a $580,000 grant to hire the director to build an AMP program here. There's an AMP program, by the way, in Craven County. There's an AMP program in Greensboro. Generally where there's an aviation cluster, there's an AMP program and that's the piece we need and that's what we're trying to build towards. So we have put together kind of a loose coalition. My office is sort of used to being an umbrella office, the Albemarle Economic Development Commission. The chancellor is on my board as an ex-official member and the president of COA and so forth. So we're sort of trying to gather our forces here in the region to make everybody aware of this opportunity that we have to create training and jobs for local people. And it will involve the AEDC, Dave's office, Northeast Workforce Development, Elizabeth City State University, COA, ECSU, and regional public schools. I think we're not going to have a culture of aviation unless we interest kids at a very early age in flying and in the careers that will be possible for them. And an additional partner in Elizabeth City is Port Discover, the Children's Science Museum. And to give you an example of some of the effort that's already been made, about a month ago, ECSU and Port Discover got together and had an aviation science program at the museum. At the end of the program, Anthony Sharp took the older kids flying out at the Elizabeth City Regional Airport. And Arastis Gooden, who's a professor of aviation at ECSU, took the younger kids to a flight simulator at ECSU. So all these kids got to experience firsthand the excitement of flying and those are the kinds of programs we think we need to continue to develop. So we are putting together with this coalition a kind of marketing program aimed basically at the region, at elected officials, at educators, and at students to make them aware that these opportunities in aviation in our region exist. Initially, we want to start by building a sort of user-friendly website that would really be kind of broad-based. We have worked closely over the years with Kahoon and Cross, a very good marketing firm to help develop our marketing material and our message. And one of the things that struck them when they did research on workforce development and job-seeking is that none of the stuff is very user-friendly. The websites are out there, but they're fragmented. The information is put out by people who are not communicators, they're technicians and bureaucrats for the most part. And so this would be an attempt to create a website where whether you were, say, a 5th grader interested in nursing or a 40-year-old man who'd just been laid off from a manufacturing job, you could go to this website and find out what training opportunities were available in our region and take advantage of them. And then we want to create an outreach program, oops, excuse me, that go to all the counties in the COA service area and in the workforce development area with exhibits that Lloyd has called loud, fun, and cool. And that might involve a van with a flight simulator that you could take over the lunch break to a middle school to let kids experience that, or it might be a remote-control helicopter that a team from, say, Cam Tech built that they could see how to fly and learn, that they too could take the kind of courses to do that. So our state tie-ins in this program, we think we're doing this at a good time. We are gonna meet in May with Tony Habit, who's the Executive Director of the NC New Schools program. There is, by the way, an aviation high school in Camden County that NC New Schools helped start, and we are hopeful that with NC New Schools' help, we'll be able to start one for this region. And coincidentally, at the same time, and I think some of you may have been at that symposium, Lieutenant Governor Dalton has a jobs initiative which is joining our business in schools and we feel like this fits right into that. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to work with NC New Schools and the Lieutenant Governor's Initiative to kind of pull all these programs together, get kids interested at an early age, and ultimately find funding particularly for that COA program so we can train local people for the job opportunities instead of having to see them be recruited from outside the area. So I am well aware that Duke is playing at 9:00 tonight and I don't want to be personally responsible for delaying any of you all who may hope to see that. So that's all I've got. I'll be happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions specific to workforce development, Dave would be happy to answer them.
Commissioners have any comments or questions? I have, I have, I don't know if it's a comment or a question. I serve on the COA Board of Trustees.
Right.
And it's my understanding the state did give the money for the building that needs to be built and it was given to Elizabeth City State University and as a package of several buildings. And they have not started that building. It was, I want to get a clarification, did the state give the money or not?
There was money that could have been directed toward, it was actually, it was the Community College Systems President Scott Rawls who made the decision to bundle the two programs. Before the budget shortfall, it seemed that that was probably the best way to get the entire package in place. Once the budget shortfall happened, though, you ended up with a $2.5 million program attached to a $15.5 million project. So it was harder to find. The money for the aviation school has never been available. There was a possibility at one time that the money that had been appropriated for COA's education building, which was about the same amount of money, could have been diverted, but it wasn't. And, I mean, from ECSU's point of view, I can certainly understand them not wanting to actively take money away from one department and give it to another, but that's...
We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of jobs, though. I'm not just talking about, I'm talking about high-paying jobs.
Right.
Seems like it would be more of a priority to get that building out there and get it started when the money is there, unless you tell me it's not there.
It's no longer there because the education...
It's been taken away.
The education building has been started.
Okay.
So...
Well, Currituck's airport is open and we would love to build some hangars and if it's not gonna work out in other places, Currituck would love to have some of those jobs over here.
And we would love to send them over here and it will be close enough...
That sounds like we got a partnership. Have you spoke with their economic developer?
We speak to each other almost weekly.
Okay. Anything else? Thank, and since we're talking about Albemarle Commission, I think it's only proper to congratulate Commissioner Nels, who is now the chairman of Albemarle Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Gentlemen, comment. Item 5, public hearing in action, PB 10-05, Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours, request for a special use permit for an outdoor tour. Operator located at 1070 Ocean Trail, tax map 115B, parcel P4B2, Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody, this is a special use permit, so whoever wishes to speak in favor of or against this special use permit has to come forward now and be sworn. Do we have anybody? Do we have the applicant here? Yeah, you need to come forward, sir. I ask you to put your left hand and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. As has been practiced, Mr. McCray?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, this and the next three items on your agenda are special use permit matters which you sit as a quasi-judicial body, as finders of fact or judges, in making your decision. It's different than a typical zoning matter where you sit as a legislative body and may consider any information presented to you in making your determination as to whether a matter should be adopted or not. In this type of proceeding, the applicant is, of course, afforded certain due process rights, which includes the opportunity to present evidence, to examine and cross-examine witnesses, and to present any rebuttal evidence to respond to any persons in opposition that might present evidence in the course of this case. The applicant is also due to the opportunity to have a fair and impartial, non-biased decision-maker, which would be, of course, this board. And therefore, you may only make your decision based upon competent material and substantive evidence that's presented to you during the course of this hearing. Not anything that you may have heard from persons or any information you may have received outside of this meeting room or hearing, but only that information which is presented to you during the course of this hearing. With that having been said, then I will open the hearing and ask Mr. Woody to present the staff's case and analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. This request is a special use permit for an outdoor tour operator. I'm gonna go through this actually very quickly, and those folks that watch the program regularly know you've seen several of these already. And that's the idea, that the board required all the outdoor tour operators, or typically folks that provide horse tours, to get a special use permit, so every operator is subject to the same conditions. This particular, and actually, I want to say, we've had three tour operators have been approved to this point for a total of 21 vehicles. So tonight, you have your fourth and fifth tour operator, and I'll go through the number of vehicles for each of those. This request is for the property, Corolla Jeep Rentals, which is located in the Corolla Light Plan Unit Development. You can see on the photograph there, the building, point 2 with the yellow arrow. The applicant for this particular request is asking for a tour operator that consists of one van that seats 14 persons, one SUV that seats seven persons, and five Jeeps seating five persons each. And this request, and I'm not gonna go through these, but in the staff analysis, you have all the findings of fact and the TRC comments that are included. you have all the findings of fact and the TRC comments that are included. And staff, as we have with the other three, we do recommend approval of this request. Our recommendation did have additional conditions. There are seven conditions. They're the exact same ones that have applied to the other three tour operators, conditions such as tours are guided from Memorial Day to Labor Day, tours, vehicles are labeled so they can be identified, they have to comply with the Code of Ordinances, any state or federal laws. We have a parking analysis in the staff report, and obviously we're making sure that every tour operator has adequate parking for the capacity of their vehicles. We allow reserved vehicles in the event that one of their primary vehicles is broken down. I think those vehicles are difficult to keep running, given the conditions they're driving in up there. And last thing we have is we did establish that the use permits reviewed annually by the staff, and we'll provide a report to the Board of Commissioners after the season. And of course, if any of the tour operators have a series of violations or have not operated within the requirements of the permit, the board can certainly choose to rehear that and possibly revoke their permit. But again, staff will track that and provide you a written report. Planning Board heard this request, and they did recommend approval unanimously. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Woody?
What is the length of the permit?
At this point, the length, the permit does not have a time limit, but it does require that the staff review the permit annually and provide you guys with the report.
Okay, so they just come in and speak with you if everything's okay, you sign off?
That's right.
If you've had complaints, then it could be kicked up to the Board of Commissioners for revocation.
That's correct.
Okay. So they wouldn't have to come before the board every year?
Yeah, that cuts down on some of the paperwork that staff has to do, cuts down on them taking the trip over here, and cuts down on your time to deal with them.
I certainly don't want us, as I look at the federal and state government, I certainly don't want us to put undue burdens on businesses any more than what's necessary. So abbreviation, brevity is the word tonight.
Absolutely, and that's our intention, and any tour company that operates within the requirements of the permit, and most of our companies are good companies, they won't have a problem, and you may never see them again after tonight.
Okay, that's good.
Any further questions for Mr. Woody?
I just have one more question. Are these all the same tour companies that have been, has any new tour company been established this year?
To this point, the only new tour company we've had established was the Crawled Wild Horse Fund, and they have one vehicle. We did have an application for a new company that will come to you in July, so in July you may, you will consider a new company. Until that point, all these are our kind of usual regularly operating tour companies.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Woody?
Just one last comment. I would certainly encourage the tour companies, as part of their annual, whatever you do for business write-offs or whatever, the Corolla Wild Horse Fund could certainly use some donations and some help, as they depend mainly on donations to protect the asset that you make a living on, so it's very important that we support the wild horses the best that we can, so that's it.
The applicant have any questions for Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to present anything to the board?
Yes, sir.
All right, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question, Mr. Woody. Mr. Woody, does the staff have a reasonable number of vehicles that they want to totally employ on the beach? I assume that we're dealing with an average of five to seven per company, and we're looking at at least five companies now, so that's 25 per...
To thirty.
To thirty per trip with the applicants that we now have. Is there a number where that becomes a problem? I'm not looking at tonight or June, but...
I don't know that I have an answer for that offhand. It's kind of a subjective standard, I think. If you'd like us to try to determine that somehow, we can spend a little time on that and see if we can develop a maximum threshold. I'm not sure how to do that exactly, but if you'd like us to look into that as we permit our existing tour operators, we can certainly try that.
I think in fairness to all the applicants that come henceforth, that we have some idea about the maximum number of tour vehicles that the beach can handle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who is not presenting any evidence that would like to in this case at this time? So you know when, Mr. Chairman, the evidentiary phase will be closed.
All right, I now close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Nels, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Item six, public hearing in action, PB 10-06, Corolla Outback, request for a special use permit for an outdoor tour operator located at 1148 Ocean Trail, tax map 114, parcel 42A, Papa Branch Township. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you please come forward so he can be sworn? Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as I said earlier, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and it will be conducted in accordance with the litany I just gave to you a few moments ago. And with that, I'll open the hearing and ask Mr. Woody to present the staff analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. This is going to be even shorter. This is our second permit request tonight. Basically, the same premise as I discussed during the last case applies to this. Subject property is on the west side of Ocean Trail, it's in the Corolla Village area, just south of the village of Ocean Hill. On the photograph there, you can see the building indicated with the yellow arrow. In this particular case, what you're dealing with is two 12-passenger safari trucks, one non-passenger open Suburban, four five-passenger vehicles for tag-along tours, and then they have two vehicles they keep for reserve use. And again, same conditions apply to this one as they did to the last one. Planning Board did hear this case, and the Planning Board recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval with the conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Woody? Mr. Bender, you have any questions for Mr. Woody?
No, sir.
All right, you may present your case. You've got anything you'd like to present to the board at this time?
No, sir.
The board have any questions for Mr. Bender? All right, does anyone who's not presenting any evidence like to present any evidence at this point that's not yet done so?
Could I ask Mr. Bender one question?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been doing this?
Twenty years.
Were you the first?
Yes, sir.
First one up there?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any other questions?
I would like to comment that Mr. Bender did donate some, when he did a subdivision up in the northern beaches, he did dedicate some of his subdivision to open space, and also the restroom facilities that we have in the northern beaches with the boat access and restrooms were donated by Mr. Bender to the citizens of this county. And I don't know if we've ever publicly thanked you, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I've talked to a number of mechanics that work in the Grandy area, and this industry, as far as I can tell, redistributes somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars back into the Currituck community. They don't go outside the community to have their trucks redone, serviced, and everything. They use all Currituck County labor. And I'm, again, congratulate Mr. Bender and the rest of the people in this business for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And there's no further evidence to be introduced, and the evidentiary phase is closed, Mr. Chairman?
Close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion for approval.
A motion from Commissioner Nels, second from Commissioner Etheridge. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item seven, public hearing in action, PB 10-04, Outer Banks Harley-Davidson, request for a special use permit to allow special events, Outer Banks Bike Week and the Outer Banks Bike Fest, located at 8739 Carrot Oak Highway, tax map 131, parcel 88, Papa Branch Township. Ask you, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. McCray.
And, Mr. Chairman, another quasi-judicial proceeding. The evidentiary phase of the hearing is now open, and Mr. Woody will present the staff analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. This is a special use permit for a special event, and what the permit request is the ability to hold two special events, and one is April 18th through April 25th, which is Bike Week, and the other is the Outer Banks Bike Fest, which is October 1st through October 3rd. So this use permit would cover those two events. The property, and you can see there, is on the east side of Carrot Oak Highway, it's in the south end of the county, Outer Banks Harley-Davidson. 2006 land use plan classifies this property as limited service in the Point Harbor sub-area. The actual site is 3.2 acres, it's zoned for commercial uses. One thing to point out, the site's served by County Water and has an on-site septic system, but of course, with the special event, they will be providing porta-johns for users of the property. And basically, what you have here is they're hosting, or hosting bikers, or patrons, or attendees of Bike Week and Bike Fest at this location. The facility is used to house vendors, live music, and serves as a starting point for some of the scenic runs and tours that they do from this facility. One thing, and the site plan's a little difficult to see, but one thing I'll point out that I think's a little different from years past, is we worked with the applicant, in this case, to get the vendors and the stage and all the music out of the parking lot, and out to the corners of the parking lot and in the grass, to make sure we have adequate parking within their lots. We've kind of shuffled everything to the edges to make sure we can accommodate the bikes. This did go to the TRC. We got a lot of comments from emergency management about fire retardant tents, which they'll have to do, health service comments about their permits for the food and porta-johns and all that kind of things. And we got comments from Sheriff Johnson about trying to accommodate parking at this event and trying to make sure it's safe. So we've worked with the applicant to do that, to make sure we have a good situation, we hope for this. The existing building was required to provide 46 spaces. They actually have 102 spaces installed. As I mentioned, we set up the site where most of the vendors and things are out of the parking lot. And we've also asked them to identify some satellite parking for overflow, and you can see there, the Mutiny Tattoo Building is satellite parking, and that's the preferred satellite parking option, because obviously if their main parking lot fills up, we want folks to be on the same side of the highway as the facility. Obviously, and we've also asked them not to park on Church Road, and they've agreed to put signs there to keep the traffic out of these, from blocking these people's driveways. So we've tried to work with them on that. They've also going to park, or install no parking signs along Carrot Oak Highway, and they said they will enforce towing if cars park on the highway or on Church Road. Findings of fact for the SUP are in your case analysis. Staff does recommend approval of this request with the findings of fact and TRC comments included in the case analysis. Planning Board recommended approval, and Planning Board kind of gave us two things to work on between their hearing and yours, and I want to report on those. Planning Board, and I think this makes sense, says the satellite parking, which is the barrier island vacation station in the post office, only be used in, you know, when the remaining, when the parking at their facility and the tattoo facility are filled up, so those are kind of last resort parking. One thing is, is they will hire off-duty sheriff's deputies to help with traffic flow and coordinating people where they park it to make sure we're safe. The other thing is that they ask us to check with NC DOT to see if we could have message signs placed on the highway leading to this, so we could warn drivers that there is a Bike Week festivity here, and there could be some congestion. And I was pleasantly surprised that DOT is going to do that, so we will have message board signs placed out there in advance of this parking situation to make sure our motorists are aware of that. So I thought that was a good thing, that we were able to work out. With those conditions, Planning Board also recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions the board members have for Mr. Woody?
Now, Mr. Woody, I would suggest that when you talk back with DOT, that you consider those message board signs from the state line all through the county, because it's going to be a bottleneck, I think, in two or three places. And the more that, then those message signs do help out, whether you have one on the shortcut, but it would sure be appropriate not only to have them in this location, but to have them where there are the stoplights and where there's the intersection of 168, 158, I think, can be a congested area also.
I'm happy to do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Woody?
I would just say that over the years, the only complaints I've had is the parking on East Mobile Road and Church Road. The folks on Church Road, I don't, there's a access point there, right at the top of the red square you've got, that allows traffic to go onto Church Road. You see where I'm at, Mr. Woody?
I do, yes, sir. Right, right here.
Why can't that be blocked? I've had requests for that to be blocked, for, to stop the ingress and egress and parking and everything that goes along in there.
You could, that can certainly be added as a condition of the...
Would it help?
I'm not sure about, it may be a better question suitor for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that would help. We, last year, put up signs in, two signs per yard between our dealership and the church, and over the four days it was last year, we only had to tow two cars. We did tell every one of the residents that live on that road, if somebody's out there, they had a cell phone number to call somebody at the dealership, and the cars were towed within a half an hour. So we're very, we support that very strongly.
Okay, and does the sheriff have authority to give tickets for people parking there if it's a no-parking special event? Mr. McCray?
I do not believe the sheriff does, because we've not named this as a road in our ordinances for one thing, for which parking is prohibited. And I'm not sure right offhand whether the Ohio Patrol would have that authority or not.
Just a question.
Any other questions by the board for Mr. Woody? If not, does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Woody at this time? Would the applicant like to make any presentation?
Just a brief statement. This is our eighth year in the Outer Banks Bike Week, with the opening of our dealership here in Carrot Oak County. It has grown north. Every year, we're looking forward to it growing even further north and being more involved in Carrot Oak County. This year, we have several businesses that are major players in our event, Neon Moon Saloon, Gravediggers, a lot of folks are really pitching in to gather that traffic during this off-season. The businesses in Grandy, the restaurants, the hotel, or the gas stations, all the retail businesses gained from this event. So I just think it's going to continue to grow north and look forward to working with you all to make this the best event we can for Carrot Oak County.
Are any of your food vendors local?
They're all local.
All your food vendors are local?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's not the truth. The lady that runs BJ's told me that she was contracted with you, and you turned around and hired somebody from Derrick County. Is that the truth?
We have, I mean, I could read the name, Wilkes Food, Pelican Restaurant.
Yes, sir, that's at the beach.
Pelican, well...
Derrick County. That's not in Derrick County.
I didn't understand what you were asking.
Yeah, I mean...
Carrot Oak and Derrick County, yes. Three is one from there.
Mr. Dennis Anderson knows nothing about being affiliated with you. He talked to me for two hours about that the other day, when you came before traveling tourism to get $2,500, and Dennis knew nothing about it. He called me from El Paso, Texas. So if you're going to use his name, you probably ought to have his permission.
Not talking with him directly, we talked with a lady named Dawn at his facility, who we partnered with for his buddy bogs, blood bogs during the summer. So he may not be aware of it, but we do work with them, and they are part of our advertising.
The only reason I brought up the local vendors is the local tourism board did grant y'all money for advertising.
Sure.
And we do that hoping that it's going to help our local businesses, so in the future we would just, as, I'm talking as a member of the Tourism Advisory Board. When we're going to give money to help with advertising, we'd like for the return on the dollar to kind of help our local businesses. So, I mean, no harm done, but in the future, I'm just telling you where I'm coming from, we'd like to see you branch out with more of our local vendors for food and different things.
I understand.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just had a comment about, are you aware the crawl is going on?
I'm sorry?
Are you aware of the crawl, which is happening that weekend, the 24th?
No, I'm not.
Well, everybody should be aware of it by now, but on the 24th, the Carrot Oak Rotary Club is having a county-wide lawn sale from the state line to the causeway, starting at 6:00 in the morning. And hopefully, the tens of thousands of people that that draws will compound the crowd effect that you have down there, too. And they will, I hope, subsidize or actually deal with all of the local businesses, because that's what they're here for, is to acquire all the treasures hidden in the garages around Carrot Oak County.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Is there anyone else who's not presenting any evidence at this time that would like to do so? Maybe you need to come forward and be sworn if you intend to testify.
Hi, I'm Lori London, 128 Holly Lane.
You need to be sworn.
Oh, sworn.
Put your left hand, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. My, I'm here tonight representing my daughter. If you'll pull the map back up, I'll explain. She leases the home that is between the barrier island and the post office. If you'll see that empty space there, where there is not a green section?
Right here.
Yes, yes. She had a lot of difficulty last year and the year before. The noise is really very hard for them for the week. But outside of that, she had difficulty with parking. And she's requested that signage or get some assistance to keep people from coming in and out of her yard and turning around. She said it was, it was, it was very difficult. So I don't know what you can do to try to assist her, but she has two small children and a family, and would like to at least have some consideration.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other members have any questions for Ms. London?
That can be incorporated to any approval, if approval's granted, correct?
Best thing for them to do is to go somewhere for the weekend, if they'll put you up somewhere, because I don't know how you're gonna avoid that problem, Lori. That's gonna be an impossible task for the sheriff, for Mr. Johnson, or anybody else to keep that from happening. There's gonna, if there's twenty to thirty thousand motorcycles down here, there's, there's no way that that's gonna.
You're really talking the whole week, I think, not just the weekend, that's the worst.
Weekend, certainly. I'm sure the gentleman would be more than happy to put no parking signs and no turning around, and you could probably get about anything you want right now to make that happen.
I will tell you, Barry, Paul, it is really, I mean, it's very difficult for them. They, they even said last year, they wish you'd at least provide them with earplugs. I mean, they're just, the noise is terrible. Boom, 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 that's all they hear. And when you accumulate that many bikes at one time, it's, it's a serious noise problem for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant have any questions, or would you like to present anything, based upon Ms. London?
We'll be happy to put some signs up.
I have one question. Maybe I missed it. What are you doing for security? How are you handling security for the site?
Security as in during the daytime?
Yes, sir.
Or for the tents?
To make sure that people don't get out of hand or.
We're currently negotiating with a private security firm to come down and provide that security for us.
Okay, thank you.
It can also be part of an approval requirement for that.
My question is, why couldn't you have higher Carrituck County deputies who already
know North Carolina law and who also need employment to do it instead of an outside company?
I will tell you this, Ms. Taylor, the sheriff was adverse to doing that in events in the past. She, she specifically told me that she couldn't do it, that she wouldn't let her off-duty deputies work my bike show. So I don't know what the, what the conflict is there, but I have no problem with Mr. Johnson hiring. I'd sure much rather have him hire somebody local than somebody outside, but that was against her policy at one time.
If I may, we have in the past used off-duty Carrituck officers. With it expanding to a week, the number of slots that we have available and have need, they cannot fill. So that's why we had to go, we did ask first. We have to go to somewhere else to provide that full coverage for the full week.
And you feel like you've got adequate security for the entire week, especially for the weekends?
We will have, yes. We're still negotiating with the, with the, the two different companies, but we will have adequate security.
All right, if there's no further evidence, no further questions, and the evidentiary phase of the hearing is closed, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recommend approval with the staff findings of facts and the additional conditions of proper signage of no parking and some proof to the county that the security has been contracted and is being provided. Is there anything else we need to add?
I would add the TRC comments and the Planning Board recommendations be included in the case analysis.
Well, that's staff findings of fact.
I'd like to make an addition to the fact that maybe the noise be curtailed after certain hours, which I think is by ordinance anyway, but just make sure they understand that.
If I could give you a comment. Our, most of our operations go from ten AM to six PM. At no circumstance, the dealership will be closed at seven o'clock. So most of the traffic will be out of the residential areas by seven or seven-thirty.
I could pull the meeting back into order, we have a proper motion? Right, now, I'd like to add one more condition.
Okay.
That you do everything possible to alleviate any traffic on Church Road and that that be reviewed after this show to see how successful you were. Next year, we might have to make different accommodations.
So you're telling us that the noise stops at six o'clock, give or take five or ten minutes?
Any noise we're responsible for stops at six o'clock?
Okay.
No.
Okay, so we have a proper motion, do we have a proper second? Have a proper second from Commissioner Roar? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, item eight, public hearing in action, PBO nine dash twenty-eight, Maple Commerce Park. Request for preliminary plat, special use permit for an eleven-lock commercial subdivision located at two oh four Airport Road, adjacent to the Carrituck County Airport, tax map fifty-two, parcel fourteen A, Crawford Township. Anyone that wishes to speak to this in favor of or oppose and present evidence, you need to come forward now. Can I ask you, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McCray?
Mr. Chairman, this is your final quasi-judicial matter for this evening, and with the same litany in mind as I gave at the first one, we'll open the evidentiary phase and ask Mr. Woody to present the staff analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. This is a request for a preliminary plat, special use permit for an eleven-lock commercial subdivision owned by Carrituck County, adjacent to our airport on the north side of US one fifty-eight or Shortcut Road. The two thousand and six land use plan classifies this property as full service, it's in the Barco-Coined Jock Airport sub-area. Property is currently zoned ATM, which is heavy manufacturing, industrial zoning. Obviously, this, this request is a commercial subdivision, it's intended to house industrial uses or uses that are related to the operation of the airport, or not necessarily the operation of the airport, but uses that would fit in or be compatible in this area. Track, and I, the track is actually a heavily wooded track, and one thing that we are trying to do on this is as we, as we subdivide the hundred and nine acres for the eleven-lock commercial subdivision, there is a thirty-two acre residual parcel on that map that you see there. It's the green area that's just kind of a north, northeast of the airport or the subdivision property. And the idea on that is, is for the county to protect that wellhead or that wetland area. Another thing, and we'll retain ownership of that. Another thing we're trying to do as a county and be sure of is our water supply, there's drinking wells or water wells that exist in this area. Obviously, another important thing for us to do is to make sure that none of the uses associated with this park are create a hazard or incompatible with the drinking water. So we've also established some protections from the existing wells that are on the, around the buffer of the property. And one thing I also want to point out on this particular subdivision is it was designed in a way that was, minimizes clearing, has drainage, it flows with the natural topography of the land, utilizes native plant species. We're actually spending a lot of money and putting a lot of detail into the stormwater infrastructure, with the idea being that as this park develops, it can be a model, kind of our own green park we're doing at the local level. We've got a lot of help with that. Mr. Robie's provided a lot of good input on that design. So I think we've tried to design a park that's compatible and consistent, not only with our adopted plans and with the idea of an airport being there, but also is compatible and consistent with the natural environment that exists there, the drinking water, the vegetation, the headwaters of the North Rivers. We're trying to balance all those interests. I think we've done a pretty good job of that. In your case, or in your staff report, you can see the findings of fact, I'm not gonna go through all those. I do want to touch on one thing, if the board remembers, we recently adopted a small area plan for this part of the county, the Maple, Maple-Barco Small Area Plan. And in that plan, this area is designated as an employment area. We'll say that's the first time we've actually went into a planning document and created an employment area. That's the idea of not only focusing an area for employment needs, but even protecting that area and making sure that employment remains viable there. And the idea is we generate economic activity in this area, job growth, kind of like your comment alluded to earlier about the airport being open for some job growth and some business opportunities. And one thing we've done is, is we're trying to create a campus-like setting, open space, visual quality, pedestrian activity, and that's all important because this is also adjacent to our cooperative extension building and future rec center buildings. We have to make sure that the industrial park fits in or the commerce park fits in with our, our public or our recreational improvements we also have planned for there. So you got a lot of stuff, a lot of things going on here. One thing I want to point out, and before I turn it over to Mr. Robie, is we do have some recommended conditions in the staff report. Staff does recommend approval. One thing we mentioned, you'll probably notice, is condition one says that a traffic analysis should be conducted prior to final plat approval. NC DOT is gonna require that, so that's really kind of redundant condition, but that's actually under contract and underway. We're having that traffic study done, so that'll, and that'll actually cover not only the commerce park, but the rec building and everything else we're doing out there. So we're gonna kind of, I guess, get all that in one sweep, one fell swoop. Another thing I want to point out is in condition number six, we talk about the wells in the commerce park as being resources for our public water supply. And we tried, in the SUP, we wanted to get some of the language from the covenants into the use permit. And the reason we did that is, right now, the county's a property owner, so obviously we make the covenants, we're gonna follow the covenants, but we wanted to make sure that as we sell properties, if the park's successful, and eventually we're not the majority property holder, we wanted to include some of the protections for the drinking water into the special use permit. So the county always has the ability to make sure our drinking water supply is protected, which is an important thing for this county. One thing I'll clarify is in condition six, we talk about hazardous materials, hazardous materials and other substances that are not, or could be a groundwater hazard, should be prohibited. That should be clarified, to say prohibited within the five-hundred-foot wellhead protection area shown on the preliminary plat. What that means in English is, when you have a well, you've got an initial hundred-foot protection area where nothing can go in that area, and none of the lots even encroach on the hundred-foot protection area, and that's set up by NC Deaner. We've taken it a step farther to say that within five-hundred-foot of, feet of a well point, that no hazardous materials can be located in that area. That doesn't mean you can't have development within the five-hundred feet, you just can't have hazard materials within that five-hundred feet. So I do want to clarify that. And of course, we go on to say, within that five-hundred feet, we name some specific things you can't do, liquid petroleum refining, storage and distribution of gasoline, so forth and so on. So again, I think we tried to use the use permit process not to necessarily over-regulate ourselves as a county, but to provide some protections to the county and to show people that we want to make sure this industrial park is compatible and this subdivision's compatible with the surroundings. Planning Board did hear this case at their meeting last month, they recommended approval. One thing they asked us to make sure was that the water quality will not be affected by the old landfill. And that's not really an issue that necessarily, I don't know if the subdivision directly impacts, but I do know Mr. Robie spent some time or probably has some information related to that point, and he can discuss the water quality related to the old landfill if necessary. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody at this point?
Yeah, I have one, Ben. The hazmat materials, is that going to include trucks used for trucking or storage in case somebody wanted to come in and use one of those facilities as a terminus?
It would, it would depend on what the storage is. I mean, if the trucks were used or actually parked with hazardous materials in them, then yes, that would apply.
But I'm talking about the trucks themselves, because they're hauling diesel fuel and they would be used to, I mean, most, most terminal truck places have a number of trucks and trailers that are stored on a permanent basis.
Well, one thing we've done, I don't know that I know the answer to that specifically, but one, one condition we've added is that any other uses that are determined by the county manager or designated to pose a significant groundwater hazard can be prohibited. So when we got a site plan for that, and if the staff determined that those trucks were being used in that way, I would go to, obviously Dan, who would then go to Pat Irwin or even NC Deaner to determine if that was a threat. And if, upon the evidence we gather it is, then we can prohibit that use or the parking of those trucks. I can't answer a question tonight, but I can tell you, there's a mechanism in place that we can review that and ensure that if it is a hazard, we can prohibit it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Woody?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The county had to comply with the same process anybody else that comes in for us, did we not?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Ethers. And we definitely, Peter can probably attest to that, so, he did.
So tell us, Pete, what's it like to work with a county?
Well, I will speak, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a process. We've changed the site plan several times. Sean Robie and Hyman Robie have been very patient with us, but to staff's credit, they've been very open with our design, and it's been a very good and hearty give and take, but I think the end result is very desirable for businesses. It's gonna be a very marketable piece of property. Looking forward to getting it finished and getting the final plat approval. To answer Mr. Gnome's question, to clarify, what Ben was talking about is, in the five-hundred-foot wellhead protection area specifically, there are two parcels that are significantly impacted by that, that will have to be creative on uses for it, that don't involve some of those hazardous materials. But really, in any case, in TRC review, if there's something that will pose a groundwater risk on any parcel in the property, we'll review it, run it through the proper authorities. And if it's not something we're comfortable with being on top of our water source, it will not be approved at that, during that process at that time.
Thank you, Peter.
Any members, other members of the board have any comments or any questions for Mr. Bishop at this point? If not, then ask Mr.?
Robie.
Robie, I'm sorry. Mr. Robie, is there any, any information he may have to the, for the board?
Thank you. There was a comment about an older landfill at one point. The location of that, from what we have been able to ascertain, is back to the west of the extension building and is not actually on this site. If I can answer any of the questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Robie?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Snowden, I saw that you were sworn in, would you like to present some testimony?
Sean Henry Snowden III, one of Maple Road. I think my voice may have recovered a little bit. I sound like I'm going through puberty again. I raised some concerns at the planning board meeting regarding the old landfill. This is along the edge of the Old Access Road. It's a sand road that went in there, snaked, and came out right where the park is now. And there were some ponds on the east side of that road, I think we pointed it out on the map. The concern was, yes, it's not part of the site that's being developed, but on the master plan for the site, it was kind of curious to me that they would have recreation fields on top of where there was potential of stuff being thrown in these ponds with very little discretion. Mr. West, who sits on the planning board, acknowledged my statement of that, and that's all part of the minutes. One of my concerns with this, from our perspective, I'm a neighbor in Maple, I live on the other end of Maple Airport, on the northeast end. The county has an ordinance, a pretty comprehensive lighting ordinance for the Outer Banks. It requires full cutoff fixtures. For the mainland, I believe that requirement only exists for buildings above a certain square foot, forty thousand square feet. Really, full cutoff fixtures here would help preserve our quality of life, because it is very rural on our side of the airport, it's farm fields and residential housing. And that is listed as a transition area, a transition from the heavy manufacturing at the airport over into the residential areas on the northeast. A big concern is traffic on Maple Road. If you look at the triangle that's cut there, trucks leaving the landfill right now cut off three miles on a trip when they come back through Maple Road and go north. It's three miles longer to go out to one fifty-eight, down to Barco, and come up one sixty-eight. All weekend long, we see trucks coming through there. So there needs to be some restrictions on truck traffic through our road. That request needs to be either enacted by this board, or it needs to be requested of DOT, because there are a lot of older people who live on that road. My parents were one of them, these people are in their late sixties, early seventies, and my dad's eighty-one. And they don't need to be locked in their homes because of traffic on that road. One of the big things, if you look to the east, due east of the red area in that swamp area, Mr. Woody made a statement, the headwaters of the North River here. The North River is down to the lower left corner, to the upper right corner is the Coined Jock Bay. The creek that empties the east end of this airport is Coined Jock Creek. It's approximately six feet deep, all the way up to about five hundred feet, seven-hundred-and-fifty feet to the end of the airport. A tremendous volume of water comes off that airport property and this industrial park property and flows into Coined Jock Bay. Coined Jock Bay is the largest estuary, an enclosed estuary in Carrituck Sound. Dowdy's Bay is a large one, but it's not enclosed. Back Bay is the largest. Commercial. Bay is the largest. Commercial fishermen ply their trade out there. We eat food that comes out of that. So any water that comes off this property has to be controlled. Our groundwater levels right now are probably within six inches of the surface, and there's no end to the rainfall in sight, was kind of dry today. So anything that goes in the ground is not going to, it's not staying in the ground. It's flowing off, and it's running out that creek. So, anything we can do, I know we've got to have stormwater ponds, but there's something called the laws of unintended consequences. And all of our regulations, unless they're enforced, don't do anything. I mean, we've got a couple of subdivision there in Maple right now that they're supposed to follow the stormwater laws, and now we've got water standing on the road, and I've got water standing in some of my fields that I rent for our farm. I am promoting agriculture in our area, so anything that contaminates the groundwater here, contaminates the food that we grow. I sold approximately $7,000 worth of produce off of our fields last year. I turned farmland that wasn't being farmed into a producing operation. I pay taxes in this county. We pay property taxes on our farm equipment. And if we want to continue this and provide an alternative to conventional commodity-based agriculture, we need protection. There's approximately 100 acres of farmland in that community that is a transition, a buffer around that airport, that can be used for the type of agriculture I'm promoting, rather than building houses and putting kids in school. And that's what I'm trying to do here. So I need your protection. Citizens of our community need your protection. As a member of the airport board, I'm concerned of how this meshes with the airport. Have we given consideration to if we can get any aviation businesses in there? I've not been the most friendly person towards the airport in the past, but I've asked for growth that's managed and metered, not just helter-skelter, you know, full speed forward, damn the torpedoes-type growth. We need to be cognizant of the fact that, yes, the airport can generate jobs, and it is a resource. Obviously, if they were here trying to sell us on it in Elsby City, we've got one of our own. But we need to look and see if what we're doing there meshes with what we're doing at the airport and in that industrial park. That's very important, because that's an asset that, once we use that asset up, and it doesn't benefit the airport, then we don't have any more asset. We fought long and hard for that airport, spent $110,000, I believe, in legal fees. So, that's the concerns I had. I'd really appreciate it if you could address them. Mr. Woody's addressed quite a few of them, in talking to him after the last meeting. But you have the power tonight to set the conditions on this and address the questions I've asked. Thank you.
Mr. Snowden, have any questions for Mr. Snowden? If not, does Mr. Robey have any comment in response to anything Mr. Snowden presented?
Yes, sir. I would like to address the issue of the master plan. We have performed the layout of the subdivision, and one of the other maps that we have actually shows the airport master plan overlaying with the subdivision plan. They, the amount of area upon which the two overlap is probably less than about 100 feet, and it's only along our residual lot up in the northwest corner. So it does flow very well with the master plan that is currently on record. And certainly, there's a couple lots here that would be well-suited to be incorporated into any aviation-related business.
Any questions for Mr. Robey based upon his last comment?
Let's have a question. Wouldn't most of Mr. Snowden's concerns be addressed at the time an applicant actually came out there to build or locate there? I mean, stormwater ponds, you're not going to know what you need until you know what you got, until you know what's coming. And, but I will give him that, I had no idea that we allowed through traffic through Maple Road, that whether this happens or not, if those waste management trucks are driving through Maple Road, they need to stop. That's a little small, narrow road. But the other issues, wouldn't they be addressed at the time an applicant comes forward to develop one of these lots?
Well, from a stormwater standpoint, we're going ahead and taking the step of permitting all of the stormwater necessary for development within the park at the time of the preliminary plat, at the time of the development of this park. As you can see behind the lots on the northeast corner, a very serpentitious stormwater pond. It exceeds the county's requirement for stormwater retention. Because of the theme of the green park and staying in line with Currituck Goes Green, we've tried to provide more stormwater retention, also being very sensitive to the wellheads that are in that area, as well as where this discharges out into the sound. And he is correct that this does discharge out to the northeast. None of this water makes it into the North River Basin.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to follow up on that and say that the stormwater, the approach we've taken for stormwater, for not only this subdivision, that we're taking for the entire county-owned property in this area, and then we'll discuss more this Thursday, and the public can come to an open house this Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30 to kind of see what the county's doing out here. But we, I would dare say this will be one of the more innovative approaches to stormwater northeast North Carolina. I feel like we've put a lot of work into making, I'm not going to say it's not going to flood, and it's not going to be a perfect system, but it's well above and beyond what a typical developer would do. And I can guarantee, Mr. Robey can probably attest to that, I think. We've really worked hard on that.
With the restrictive covenants that are going to be in place with some of the design standards that are still being developed, they'll be looking also for the individual lot owners to assist in doing additional stormwater work above and beyond what we're doing to permit with the state, and we're exceeding state requirements and the current county requirements.
And also want to say on the lighting, that the covenants do have, Peter, don't the covenants have a requirement, there'd be full cutoff fixture?
Yes, they do, and that's also in keeping with FAA regulations for the airport. The number-one listed preferred business in the restrictor covenants is aviation and aviation-related companies. There are some others that we list, but that is certainly the target, and synergy with the airport is one of the major reasons why we developed this park as we did.
Question for Mr. Robey. At the collection point where it collects to go down that creek to the Corn joke Bay, are we going to do like any constructed wetlands, additional constructed wetlands for additional filtration of pollutants?
Yes, sir. The, on the plan, Ben, if you will, up in the north, the north corner, and then down between the large lot and the next one, where we have the four bay areas, if you could circle that. We have some constructed wetland areas that will be in the four bays of the stormwater detention ponds. We also have constructed wetlands that are all along the shelf areas of the stormwater pond in itself. So every foot of this will have about a 10-foot-wide wetland-planted vegetated shelf along that. Now, we discharge the pond in the southeast corner.
I've got too many marks on this at this point.
We discharge in the southeast corner, and we go across the existing well-access road into a current ditch that's already there, before we drain back a little bit to the north. We have to, we have to get around that wetland area that's in there. But we're protecting the existing wetlands, we're staying well away from them. We have, as Ben mentioned earlier, there's been a considerable amount of work to designate areas for future trails. There's a lot of interconnectivity within this park between the extension building. We have trails that wrap around the backsides of the stormwater pond. There will be opportunities in there for education and extension programs, to be able to take people out, show them different types of native wetland species and native plants. We really hope that there's potential down the road for this to be a showcase for that, and to accentuate the fact that we are very close to the coast, and we can use these wetland plants in many different ways.
Any other questions for members of the board? If not, is there anyone who has not yet presented any evidence who would like to do so at this time? So you know when Mr. Chairman, evidentiary phase is closed.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve P B O nine two eight with the findings of fact and the modified staff recommendations as presented.
I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Gnome, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any further comments? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. As a, wasn't included in this, but I want to go back to allowing those big trucks on Maple Road. What would we have to do? Ask DOT to put a no-through-trucks sign?
I think you've got a potential for two roads there, because there's another little shortcut road over closer to 158 that they would cut through, too. I'd be concerned about the fragility of the road surfaces there, with heavy trucks using them.
And I want to, I'll tell you that one component of the contract, we hired a person or a firm to do a traffic study, and one component of that study is to study the impact on Maple Road. So that will be studied by a professional engineer, and above and beyond that, the plan that this board adopted does include a recommendation that we work with DOT to try to find ways to curb or discourage truck traffic from using Maple Road. So what my, what I anticipated was, is once we finish the traffic study and we get some recommendations, we then can use that to approach N C DOT.
Get it done.
And see what we can do. I can't make a promise how that happens, but we are aware of that, and it's a valid concern, and it is in the adopted plan, and we're working towards that.
Okay, that's good enough.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to personally congratulate Mr. Robey and Mr. Bishop for establishing and creating an employment area. I think it's a unique idea, and I'm glad y'all did that for Currituck County. Thank you very much.
Actually, planning did the employment area designation. We just ran with it and strongly suggested and supported it.
Mr. Woody's too modest.
Yeah.
Thank you, too, Ben.
You need to protect that other road up there, too.
The one that goes behind the 711.
Yeah, what's?
Barco Road.
Barco Road is the one before you get there.
Yeah.
Barco Road, yeah. Because we don't want them to share from one road to the other and go right up and hit that road.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, when the engineer comes back, we'll have a recommendation. We'll use that for a recommendation. All right, item nine, public hearing in action, P B ten dash twelve, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, zoning districts, and Chapter Seventeen, definitions to clarify how roadside markets are defined and regulated in Currituck County. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment, so it's a legislative proceeding and does not require the sworn testimony. Once before you tonight is an effort that staff has worked with, the planning board and the local farmers' markets on for the, probably since November of last year, so it's kind of been an ongoing process. What this resulted from is when the county planning staff and other county departments began the corridor clean sweep, we realized that the way the sign ordinance was written did not allow for farmers' markets to display signage as they had been doing. So we kind of went to the drawing table with the markets and with the planning board to try to figure out a way to, one, is to better define farmers' market, because there was a loophole that existed in that definition, and then to establish the conditions under which a signage exemption would apply to those markets. So what I want to do is, one, is probably start with the exemption that existed. Basically, in our ordinance, it said that if you were a farmers' market, you could have as many temporary signs as you wanted, basically. There's no cutoff on that or limit. So what businesses started to do was, they would go, they would sell other items, but then go to the Food Line or somewhere and buy a box of corn and put one box of vegetables out in their business. They were a farmers' market, so we're going to put out as many signs as we want to also. So obviously, staff recognized that, at the very least, if we're going to give an exemption to a farmers' market, we need to establish some kind of criteria for what a market is, so that exemption doesn't create a loophole. So we kind of worked through that process, had multiple meetings with the markets, included the planning board members in some of those meetings. And what I've got tonight before you is a draft or the amendment language that kind of came out of that effort, and I'll go through that real quickly. Number one thing is, we wanted to establish separate definitions for farmers' markets and roadside markets. Actually, what you see along the highway in Currituck County really are roadside markets. A farmers' market is an area where vendors come set up and sell their produce or their goods. So a farmers' market's more of a collective-type thing, actually. It's where I would go to a place, and there'd be five, six, 10, 15 vendors set up where I could buy produce from all the different vendors. So that's really a farmers' market. So we define that as such, and then we define a roadside market as what you see in Currituck County. That's a building or a structure on the side of the road that sells produce, not really a market. It's individually owned, and they individually sell produce there or vegetables. So we created two definitions. We closed the loophole in the roadside market definition by requiring that a minimum, a minimum amount of agriculture or aquaculture products be sold. And that's another thing, we rolled aquaculture into it, or seafood sales, because that is still an important part of Currituck County, so we didn't want to leave those guys out. And what we said is that 75% of your floor area must be dedicated to the sale of produce or vegetables or agricultural products. So that creates, obviously, that the majority of your building space, your property sales area, is dedicated to agricultural or aquaculture products. We clarified that the exempt sign is be limited to the advertisement of agricultural or aquaculture products. That's the idea that if you are, if you do qualify as a roadside market, and you can have this signage exemption, that the signs have to at least advertise agricultural products. They have to advertise what's included in that 75% that makes you a market to begin with. And finally, the last thing, which I think we all agree with this, is we tried to find a way that kind of related to agriculture and aquaculture, and what makes that unique in Currituck County. So that was kind of the basis for while we have the exemption, I guess, while we, I assume that's the basis why this was in the ordinance originally, to have some sort of exemption, was to kind of recognize the cultural heritage of agriculture and aquaculture in the county. So that's what we've got before you tonight. It's basically kind of clarifying some of the language that revolves around these markets, and we took this to the planning board meeting in March, and they recommended unanimous approval. Of course, that board helped develop the language. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
I have one. Food Line goes to a wholesale distributor, buys produce, puts it in store, sells it. What's the difference between that and these roadside markets?
Well, one thing is, well, we discussed it, but the main thing is, a roadside market, 75% of their floor space is dedicated to agricultural products, whereas in Food Line, I would say probably 15% of their floor space. Now granted-
Actual produce as opposed to-
Where the produce comes, where the agricultural comes from, I don't know that there is a difference. I will say that I've learned through this that many of the markets do bring in produce from other areas of the state, and sometimes even other states.
Well, that's a practical necessity, because there's no way that the suppliers in Currituck can maintain a consistency of stock to satisfy the demand for the market. I guess the issue I'm trying to bring up, the fact that some of these markets essentially are just retail stores, although they appear to be local farm markets, you know, ostensibly, the tourists going through believe that that produce came from somewhere around here, when in fact, it probably came out of a wholesale distributorship in Raleigh or someplace else. And the necessity of acquiring produce that way is one thing, but I don't understand why, in making an exemption that we don't allow those other stores to do, the Food Lines and places like that, why are we not requiring that these stores at least make an attempt to either grow and sell produce, or buy produce if it's available from local producers, and create a market for the people in Currituck County? Why would we give them the exemption if, in fact, they are circumventing that entire process, going elsewhere and buying the produce and bringing it here and merely vending it out of a stand on the side of the road?
Yeah, and there's a lot of these markets we have here that do grow a lot of their produce.
I understand that.
And they do trade amongst themselves.
And I agree, and I have no problem with that, as long as they do that. I say, I think, my feeling was, there should have been a requirement in the language of this document, this particular modification, text amendment, that actually addressed that, that either you grow and sell it, or you buy whatever you can here, available, and make up what you can't get available here, wherever you have to go. But if you make a consistent process of buying everything elsewhere and merely sending, selling it through a stand on the side of the road, you're not a farm market or a roadside market. You're a retail store.
I think the practical matter is, is I'll just use cantaloupes as an example. Here in the next couple months, people are going to want to start eating cantaloupes, but local cantaloupes wouldn't be available at, I don't even know that we grow them here in Currituck. We'd have to go to Tiner, to Rocky Hawk.
They won't be available in our area until sometime late July.
Late July, but-
They'll be available in South Carolina that are local. South Carolina, probably by June.
And that's when people are going to be looking for melons, so the local growing season is not long enough, elongated enough, to meet the whole year. So I think most of the markets I've talked to, they do buy local, but it's not Currituck County cantaloupes, because no, of course, me saying nobody, somebody's going to call me tonight and tell me, I grow cantaloupes. But I mean, there's not enough local- But I mean, there, there's not enough local growers to fulfill the, the needs for all the markets. So they have to get them from South Carolina, Florida, wherever they can, and that same applies to strawberries, tomatoes, pumpkins, collards, I mean, whatever. There's a short window here in the Northeast for a lot of these products, but there's a long season for people wanting to purchase them. So I think that they do buy local when they can, because I know that some of the New Bern fellows down lower Currituck grow a lot of tomatoes and cantaloupes. Yeah, that's the phone call I'll get tonight telling me that we, but I'm talking about it's not enough, the season's not long enough to, to go through the whole tourism season.
Well, as I said, I'm not requiring that they buy everything here because I know that's an impractical restriction. I'm just saying there should be some limitation in this ordinance. If you're going to be considered one of these types of markets and be exempt from the normal signage requirements, that you should be required to buy whatever can be purchased here locally, practically, that is, or grow it and offer it yourself in order to be one of those types of markets.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the definition that was utilized is one that's a universal definition that's been pretty well adopted out of Ohio, the Ohio State University in North Carolina kind of has adopted it also. It's very similar to the situation, I sit on Outer Banks Catch Committee, and we're trying to come up with local branded seafood. And shrimp is probably the best example. There's about four different varieties of shrimp that they catch, but the season's so short that in order to provide consistency to pay for refrigeration units and whatnot, they need to be able to bring shrimp in and keep that season as elongated as the chairman has stated, because, you know, they have to have these refrigeration units now to hold this produce, and it's a sizable investment, so they have to be able to keep things in there and keep them seasonal.
Mr. Woody, the committee that come up with this was made of planning board members and roadside markets?
It was. Every, every market operator in the county was invited, and actually, I think all of them participated for the most part.
This was agreed upon by everybody?
Yes, sir.
Woody, was it mentioned about grandfathering these existing roadside markets?
We, we did, we did discuss grandfathering the markets. The, the only challenge with that is if you grandfathered all the existing markets and you didn't make a, a provision for new markets to come on board, some of the members were worried that if one farm, if, if the children of one farm don't want to do the market, that grandfather market may go away, but if the children of another farm want to start a market, they may not have a good mechanism to start one. So I guess the committee, and Eddie Joe will probably speak to this, the committee felt it was better that we just create a, here's how farm markets exist, grandfather or not, if you can meet this, you can do it. I guess the idea was that we don't know that we're going to see, with the idea of selling 75% agriculture, the feeling was you're not going to see a whole, you're not really going to see any new, new ones of these, so...
I don't think you're going to see many new ones come on board.
So we did talk about it, but I think everybody felt comfortable with where this was at.
I would not vote against it as it's written, but the, the statement I'm trying to make, I think in essence, is the fact that we have a problem in this country, and this county just happens to represent a part of it, that virtually our entire food chain is controlled by half a dozen international corporations, and they support the commodities crops through subsidies paid by the taxpayers so that they can force the farmers to sell the crops to them at less than a cost to grow them. And you and I make up the difference in the form of farm subsidies for that. So Cargill, Archer Daniels, Midland, Tyson, companies like that essentially are making the money in the food markets, in the food chain, out of processing. And what they're processing and putting in the stuff that's in the grocery stores is killing us all. The problems we're having with obesity, cancer, high blood pressure, and all these other things is a direct result of what we're eating. And these local markets, people like Mr. Snowden who grows stuff where you know the farmer that did the work, that produced the produce, is where we should all be concentrating on buying those things. And we need to help support the people locally. So what I was really trying to do is make it, at least bring attention to the fact that the, the people that are here in this county that can grow things like this, that have an interest in doing it, should be supported to the extent possible. And I think the ideal way to do it is to really have these farm markets and roadside markets have some requirement that they deal with those people at least first before they go to somebody that grows 10,000 acres of tomatoes in South Carolina and buys them by the bucket full and brings them up here and sells them on the roadside stand as fine, ripe, local tomatoes, because that's what the people going through here think they're getting. So that's it. Other than that, that was, that was a point. It's pontification more than addressing the text amendment.
Any other comments or questions?
Just clarification, just to make sure. 75% of the square footage of their building or tenant area or whatever will be produce or seafood.
That's, yes, ma'am.
Correct. And the only advertisement on the highway will be for that seafood and that produce.
That's right. Seafood and then agricultural products.
Okay. And I just ask that the farm markets police themselves and try to come, stay in compliance. Don't overdo it because I can understand as other businesses, Barry and I sit in the same thing, that you're allowing a small group to have a very, very special use, and I don't want to have to continually defend that if they're not keeping up with their rules. So that's what I ask them to do as we get ready to pass this.
Well, I think there was one other thing we were hoping they would do too, is not write strawberries in hand with a crayon on the side of a cardboard box and stick it on the stickout by the highway. We were asking the signs be well-made, but it doesn't really address the nature of what we're meaning by that.
It, we, it says well-maintained, but that, that's a subjective idea.
A really well-maintained piece of cardboard with crayon on it, but it's not exactly what I'd be looking for is an impression coming down the corridor.
Was, was Mr. Cole and Grandy part of this?
Yes, sir, he was.
Well, I wonder about, I mean, so I guess you're going to eliminate fudge, fireworks, and alley's yogurt?
Yes.
Not eliminate, they just can't advertise them.
It has, it has to be an agricultural item, as, as defined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Fudge and ice cream are agriculture items. They are not, they are not, they're not, right, the word I'm trying to find, can't find, but they are not, the Health Department does not regulate them, the, the Agriculture Department regulates, regulates them. They fall under agriculture items.
I think Cole and Junior was in fact, or Junior, yeah.
No.
The one that was, um, represented.
We, we had all, all the markets.
We can't do away with alley's yogurt. I mean, we just can't do that.
She's using her fruit, making yogurt.
Right, right, okay.
And, and the fudge that both of our markets makes is made with cream and butter, and that's all falls under agricultural products. It does not fall under the Health Department code. If it did, then we would have different standards to go by with that. But USDA checks us, the Department of Agriculture checks us every year for what we do.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Public comment, Mr. Chairman, please do.
Oh. Sorry. I didn't, I don't have a sheet where everyone, anyone signed up, so do we have someone that wants to, we'll start with you. Ask you to please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Eddie Joe Powell with Powell's Market, 136 Powell Road, Shawboro. You were questioning about the growing. We are farmers. We do grow. We would love for you to come see what we grow. We have grown everything at one point or another, tomatoes, squash. Right now, we grow asparagus. That will be the first local crop. Probably, we're going to start picking them on Thursday. Then we have strawberries that will come off in May, pumpkins, and winter crops are obviously salad greens and collards. We do keep our signs well-maintained, and we will continue to do that. This ordinance, for those of you who are, are not familiar with the beginnings of this ordinance, came about when William's mother, Ms. Tilly Powell, and several other people, Mr. Cole and Grandy's mother fought to have an ordinance because they had pick-your-own products off the road at their farms and needed to be able to get people to the farm to pick their products. And then it extended to the roadside markets to be able to put our signs up to get people doing 85 miles an hour off the road into the markets. Now, we do grow, and we do buy from local growers. We buy from John, we buy from several over in Edington and in Hurtford, and it is hard for those growers. Some of those growers do sell to Farm Fresh and the local grocery stores, but they have a really hard time with that. We buy as much local product when it is available to us as we can. Obviously, bananas and citrus fruit and kiwi fruit, we cannot buy locally, so we do have to get that from somewhere else. The company that we contract strawberries with is a family-owned company. After the season is over, once ours are gone, they were started many years ago, but we still work with, we try to work with as much local as possible. And we thank y'all for your consideration on this. We also thank Ben Woody for all the time that he has spent on this, and all of the commissioners and the planning board for the time they have spent on it. And we thank you for your votes, too. We still would like to see it grandfathered. We have revisited this every five years for the past 30 years, it seems like. We would like to not have to do that again. Thank you.
Who was next? Mr. Snowden?
John Snowden, 180 Maple Road. Our farm is called Corn Jock Creek Farms. Ms. Taylor asked about how she can justify this to people who come up and go, why do they have signs and we can't? This may seem kind of like a lame excuse, but this is about heritage. It really is. Currituck, many people don't know this, but the big producers for string beans and all, they used to grow fields of beans in Currituck and come down here with combines and pick them. There was a packing house right up here by River's Edge where, and I remember that, and I'm 46, and it's been gone for a long time, but there were packing houses, there was one down where the golf course is, Running Grandy, that was run by Mr. Woodhouse, I believe. And, and the same thing that's going on on the eastern shore now with tomatoes used to go on in Currituck. It's just that our economy has shifted from agriculture to kind of this in-between where we're growing a lot of houses. So if they ask, we're just trying to maintain a heritage. I mean, I can give you an example of my heritage. My grandfather, Otto Bateman, from Papa Branch, bought and sold fish in the wintertime, and in the summertime, he farmed, and he sold truck, he sold tomatoes as a truck crop to giant open-air markets. He would drive his tomatoes up to Norfolk and sell them on the market there. That's before everybody, all these big companies got into insurance and all the stuff, you got to meet their requirements, and, I mean, I could grow a five acres field full of collards, and I couldn't get a contract with Farm Fresh or Food Line because they want, they're just so restrictive in what they do, just like Ms. Powell said. The local markets have bought from us. I understand Mr. Rohr's sentiment. One of the things I've seen, we were picking four 35-gallon tubs of squash. I mean, they were purtier than any squash that can be purchased at market. We would wash them immediately with cold water. We would go in and hand dry them and take them, and Morris's Market bought all of them for the first year and a half. The problem she had was she's going to Raleigh to pick up a truckload of produce, and she doesn't have a full truck coming back now because John's selling her squash. And I'm selling them to her for cheaper than she can buy them in the market. So there's a dilemma there with the fuel costs versus, you know, coming back with a half-empty truck. And, and William and Eddie Joe know about that. They drive their own truck up there. We sell blueberries, we sell figs. I've sold items to them, and I've made the offer to all the farm markets that if they need a special produce, that there's a lot of, there's about eight growers in the county, eight people who grow various things from sweet corn to pumpkins and things like that. And a suggestion that will help further Mr. Rohr's comment is, I made this suggestion to the Economic Development Director, is the establishment of an agricultural co-op in Currituck County that will put producers with the markets so that the producers now know what the markets want and what the markets will know what the producers make. Because Eddie Joe and William can't buy what we make unless we go tell them. As I said, we've sold to every market in the county, but it's, it's really a narrow band of growing here. I mean, cucumbers and squash only come off the first part of the season, then they're left with two or three months. Peppers come off the end of the season. They got the front end that they need. So one of the solutions is to get that agricultural co-op going, and, and I've spoken with some of the people at Raffi, and we could actually get a grant next year. There's a $30,000 community grant available for groups of farmers, not just an individual. I, I told you about the individual, I got the grant for an individual producer. There's a $30,000 grant available for establishment of co-ops, farmers' markets, and things like that. And these are things that not, would not compete with the Powells or the Morris's or people. These are things that would, would augment what they do because they typically, they typically focus on local traffic. I'm not trying to attract tourists to drive down Maple Road and buy my stuff. The locals, I'm doing community-supported agriculture, and, and the farm markets do support that to a very limited extent, but they do when they, when at all possible. So that may be something that you might want to look into later on is, is that co-op, because that would put the, the farm markets with the producers, and everybody would be on the same page. We could promote farm markets in Currituck, the, the roadside markets, and we could produce the local agriculture. Homegrown, what, what is it saying on that? Homemade, homegrown is, is one of the things that the state has done. Goodness Groves in North Carolina. And, and like I said, there's a lot of people in this county who would, who would participate in that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
David Palmer, 3861 Currituck Highway. And I want to thank Ms. Powell for her market. I had the best collards this year. They were sort of scarce everywhere else, but she had plenty, and they were good and very, the descendants may want to, and they would be excluded from it if you grandfather. And I think you need to consider that very, very hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Hearing none, close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Chairman, I, I move to approve as written.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Gregory.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Etheridge. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, farm markets, planning boards, and staff for working this out, because I know it was a very contentious issue at first, but sitting down, working it out sure did produce something everybody could live with. Item 10, consideration of contract for Child Support Enforcement Services. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, Child Support Enforcement Services is a federally mandated service that, that all communities are required to provide. Up until June of this coming year, the state of North Carolina operated Child Support Enforcement Services in northeastern North Carolina, but in the adoption of this year's state budget, they put everybody on notice that as effective July 1st of 2010, that they would no longer provide that service. The 11 counties in northeastern North Carolina pulled together, prepared an RFP, and sent out a proposal to various different vendors that would provide that service. We had 11 vendors respond. Of those 11, I think it was unanimous that all 11 counties picked Young Williams as our preferred provider. We did that in consultation with our DSS directors. Tonight, we're actually presenting to you two pieces. One is a transition plan. The state requires the, each county to adopt a transition plan and have it on file to explain how we are going to move from a state-supported program today to a county-supported program effective July 1st. So in your agenda package, you have that transition plan along with a contract that has been reviewed with Young Williams to provide the services. The contract we've asked for is a five-year contract. The first year's fee is 150, just a tick over $155,000 for the service. We do qualify for, two-thirds of that can be reimbursed by the federal government, which would net us out to about a $50,000, $55,000 cost to local governments. Again, a cost that we did not incur previous years, but now we have to pick up from the state forward. We are working in consultation with Dare County. When the state operated the program, they had a local office in Manio that supported Dare County, Currituck County, and I believe Hyde and Terrell, but they, Hyde and Terrell have gone with Washington County, so it's left Dare and County by ourselves. We are partnering with Dare under this contract with Young Williams for the office to continue to be down into the Dare County area. Young Williams will come up into Currituck County, provide services on court days. You have the contract in front of you. It is exclusive except for the counties will be responsible for the lease payments of the office space. That was set up because we actually can get higher reimbursement from the state of North Carolina if the counties are responsible for leases versus it being incorporated into the contract. It's a long contract, it's a lot involved. Child enforcement services are required again. They predominantly provide services to help locate the non-custodial parents. They help identify paternity in those cases when that is an issue. They also work with custodial parents to help enforce agreements that may or may not have been issued by the court. All these, these services go towards helping try to get parents to recognize their financial responsibilities and take that burden off of our health, our, our social service programs. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? And Mr. Scanlon? And you recommend approval of this as written?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. McCray as well?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you have a motion?[1792.54] You have a motion? Yes, ma'am?
Having sat on the Department of Social Services Board, I've talked to the director. We've been talking about this extensively and what was going to occur and what this was going to, the effect it would have on this county. And she, the director and the board are all in favor of Young Williams taking over these cases.
So you're making that as a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item eleven is consideration of agreement with Historic Jarvisburg Colored School. Mr. Scanlon or Mr. McCray?
I'm going to take that one. I guess sometime last year, after initial inquiry, more earnest discussion occurred, at least on a staff level, between Historic Jarvisburg Colored School Incorporated representatives and county representatives with regard to what interest the county might have in receiving as a gift the property and the structure known as the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School. I think, as we all know and have seen, the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School Incorporated group has gone to great lengths to restore the structure on that piece of property into a nice-looking building, and now it's just needing one other step to finish up the project and get to a point where it can be opened up, as set forth in this agreement, to maintain and preserve the structure as a testament to the African-American community in Currytuck County. What's before you tonight is a form of agreement for gift of real property with the understanding between the parties of what would occur upon the conveyance as a gift from the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School Incorporated group to the county of the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School structure and property on which it sits, which is comprised of almost one acre of land. First of all, I would note, the first paragraph says that donee agrees to gift to donor the certain real property. That should be reversed. The Historic Jarvisburg Colored School Incorporated group is the donor, the county being the donee. They, again, will convey to the county the structure and property on which it sits. The county would in turn agree to maintain the structure and protect its historic nature on the property on which it currently sits. The county would agree to continue the name designation of the structure as the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School. The county would also take steps to complete the landscaping and site work that this board approved a couple of years ago, actually, and to finish up the project so that will be in a finished state. The county would agree to include the structure and the property on any historic trail or promotion through our visitor center and tourism department. In exchange, also, the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School Incorporated group would agree to complete exhibit designs for the interpretation of the school and what it was originally used for, and would develop and maintain an operational agreement between the county and that group in going forward on how this facility will be operated to the extent that it can be opened and actually viewed and experienced by members of the public. Again, this has been negotiated as between this group's attorney and me as the county's attorney, and also some further negotiation and discussion with Ms. Peggy Burke-Meyer with the Currytuck Dare Community Foundation, who has also been advising the Historic Jarvisburg Colored School group as well. But this contract and agreement is committed to you for your consideration and approval tonight, with the next step being actually the conveyance of the property to the county and then further negotiation with regard to an operation agreement between the two entities.
All right. So anyone have any questions? And Mr. McCray? Well, I'd just like to say, as a member of that committee, that there's been a lot of hard work on behalf of the board members. A lot of them have graduated from there, so they're up in their years, and they've really taken a passion for the preservation and restoration of that school, and it's an important part of our history. And I know the whole board is proud that it has been restored and that it now will be open for the new generations to come and visit. So if the board passes this, I will just certainly think it's a good start to keep that facility open for future generations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, and I'd also like to include in that that we direct our travel and tourism department to start a publicity campaign, whether they develop pamphlets or something of that nature, to advise the public that stop at the welcome center and to accentuate the historic importance of this facility. And I'm committed to seeing that we finish this project out. It's in our end of the county, and we're very, very proud of it.
Charles. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And we have some of the members out here. Any of y'all like to make a comment? Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
You're always good for a comment. Come up here so folks can hear you.
You made my day.
Well, that's good.
First, I would like to say my, my name is Milton Ethers. I'm a member of the Board of Directors, and my nusis statement is, it's good to be here. I would like to commend the board for approving this tonight. Now we can see the other side that we're trying to get to. So much has happened, just to be started out to try to reach this point. And number one, I would like to commend Kevin O'Neil for wearing two hats, so to speak. He was in a situation where he had to sit out so often because he couldn't be a part of what was going on. But yet still, you are rallied around the situation, and you gave us what we are looking for. We are now recognized nationally.
Yep.
From the beginning, when the advertising first come about, I will tell you this, some of you may not know it, but there was a gentleman from Columbia, right across the line over there. He heard about us, and he knew what we was trying to do. He donated a two-hundred-year bond to us to take what we needed out of it and to create what we had to do to make it a historic site. It wasn't easy. We had a lot of people in our help. And months to come, when we do the dedication, you'll find this out. Thanks again, and thanks again, Chairman O'Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think you especially need to be congratulated for keeping the light burning on this project for so long, and I think it's a testament to the heritage of the community in Jarvisburg and yourself for staying with it all that time. I congratulate you.
Thank you very much, but it wouldn't have happened without those folks and the support of this board and staff. So everybody can certainly take some congratulations on that, but thank you. Item eleven A is PUD overview of Corolla. This is something I asked Mr. Woody to prepare, to discuss the approved PUDs in the Corolla area to show so the public will know and the Board of Commissioners will know exactly what is approved in these different PUDs as they come forward. And hopefully, the citizens in the Corolla area will be watching this and will get a better understanding of how these were approved, which they were all approved, I guess, back in the eighties, starting about, what, eighty-four? Eighty-eight?
They were approved, Ocean Sands was approved before them.
Yeah, it was before, it goes back to the seventies, actually.
Seventies, yeah. I'm just a young guy.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Woody, I think he's got a presentation to show.
I do, and I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can because I know there's a, well, there's a basketball game that some of us want to watch tonight. But I think this is important. I think it's good for the board to see this, and I think it's good for the citizens to see what we're going to go over tonight. Because I'll tell you, and I got to thank Donna Volova, one of the planners on staff, she put most of this together, and it took some research and going back through old maps and records. But when you really look at the PUDs on the beach and where they've, how they started and where they've come to, it's really interesting, actually. And I think you'll be surprised to see that it feels like Corolla's built out. A lot of folks, there's actually a surprising amount of development activity that still remains in Corolla. And I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's just, that's just a fact of the PUDs. So with that, we'll get into this. A PUD is a planned unit development, and that's the type of development. It's a master plan development or community with a combination of residential and non-residential uses. So it's almost like a unique mixed-use subdivision. Very innovative concept and planning. It started, I think it was introduced in the early seventies initially. And it's the idea of kind of tailoring zoning requirements to a unique subdivision situation, which a resort community, as our beach started as and still is, was certainly a unique situation. In Currytuck County, the PUD has to have a minimum of fifty acres, and at the time of zoning application, it must be under single ownership. And over time, these PUDs are so big at the beach that different folks buy different parts, but they always start out under common ownership, a minimum of fifty acres. That's kind of the origin of all our PUDs. They've actually been included in the county's zoning ordinance since nineteen seventy-five. That is very early for a rural county to have a PUD ordinance. That predates a lot of municipalities, big municipalities in North Carolina. So that is a very early PUD ordinance in this county, which is really interesting, very unique. The commercial allocation was established in nineteen eighty-two. So initially, these PUDs are residential PUDs, but I assume the county determined, which was the correct determination, that at some point, for these PUDs to be viable, you do need commercial allocation. You need to have commercial services from these folks. So in eighty-two, the county added the commercial allocation. And the key thing to keep in mind is that every PUD can have a maximum commercial allocation of ten percent. There's two exceptions to that, and I'll go over that. Then they have a minimum thirty-five percent open space dedication. So if you do the math, that means fifty-five percent of the PUD is for residential development. So that's kind of the breakdown of how a PUD works. Currytuck County, we have seven PUDs. This is from north to south. Villages at Ocean Hill, Craw Light, Monterey Shores, Buck Island, Ocean Sands, Currytuck Club, and Pine Island. We have other neighborhoods such as the Wellhead subdivision, Ocean Hill One, and the Craw, or Corolla Village area. Those are developments in Currytuck County, but they are not PUDs. So there's a couple outliers that aren't PUDs, but the vast majority of our acreage in the Outer Banks, the Craw area, is a planned unit development. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each of these real quickly. We're going to start at the north end. This is Villages at Ocean Hill. It's in red. That goes from the ramp. As an update, our bike path, grading work on that begins this week for the Villages at Ocean Hill, so they will have a ten-foot wide multi-use path there in the coming months. I just want to plug that. Villages at Ocean Hill is this. It is a PUD. It is a hundred and fifty-three point five acres. It includes thirty, fifty-three point seven acres of open space. The commercial allocation right now is ten point six seven acres. And that's an important number. Remember, PUDs can have up to ten percent commercial allocation. That's the zoning. So Villages at Ocean Hill, for example, only about seven percent of that's actually allocated as commercial. So they can still allocate an additional three percent of their land area for commercial. I hope that makes sense, what it means. Matter of fact, at Villages at Ocean Hill, only two point five eight acres are developed for commercial. So what you're looking at in that PUD is a possibility that there are still twelve point seven seven acres of additional land available for commercial development.
And when did they get that approval for the commercial development?
The six point nine percent was approved when the PUD was established, and that was back in the eighties.
So at the time it was approved, they were given that allocation of commercial before the first house was ever built?
Yes, yes, sir. They, you know, that's correct. They had the opportunity for ten percent, however, coming out of the gate, for example, they immediately got about seven percent allocated. But they, again, they still buy ordinance. They still can allocate additional land for commercial. That's an important thing to keep in mind. That all is within the framework of the PUD ordinance. So again, you've got twelve point seven seven acres of land that can still be developed for commercial. Some of that twelve acres is already allocated commercial. Some of it is subject to be reallocated as commercial or become commercial. That's important. I threw in some residential stats, just because I thought it was interesting. Two hundred and nineteen platted lots in the Villages at Ocean Hill. In two thousand and seven, sixty-seven percent of those were built out. Craw Light, it's the next PUD going south. You can see it there in red, and that's the area near the lighthouse. Two hundred and sixty-seven point one acres is the total area of that PUD. A hundred and thirty-one acres of open space, that's forty-nine percent. The commercial allocation in Craw Light is twenty-six point seven acres. That's nine point nine percent of their PUD. They're basically, they've allocated their whole ten percent, basically. So Craw Light, we know where the commercial's going to be at. But again, important thing to keep, keep in mind is eight point six five acres of that is developed. They still have eighteen acres left they can develop for commercial in Craw Light.
And they received approval to develop that commercial at the time that the plat was approved?
When the original plat was approved, it was about half of it. They've come back subsequently over the years, and they've added additional commercial allocation, which is fine. That's part of fulfilling that ten percent. So, but yes, a big chunk of that was established when the plat was approved originally.
Mr. Chairman?
Essentially, what you're saying is, I believe Craw Light went to record in eighty-four. That ten percent was vested with them in that approval.
Yes, sir. The ten percent was vested in eighty-four. As the developer, they have the ability to allocate where that ten percent goes. And obviously, if you have a PUD that's this big and this long, you want to put it in different spots, close to the residential density.
And that is true for every one of these PUDs you're going to review.
For every PUD. So I'm just trying to get, let everybody know that there's, that you will continue to see commercial development proposals in Corolla because that is, that is, in a sense, the contract that was created when these PUD zoning districts were established now. Three hundred and ninety-eight platted lots in Craw Light. Ninety percent of those were built out as of two thousand and seven. So that development's largely built out from a residential perspective. Now, of course, that's platted lots. They could still plaid additional residential lots. Next one down is Monterey Shores. That's one of our larger PUDs. Monterey Shores, three hundred and fifty-five point six acres, a hundred and thirty-one point nine acres of open space. Their commercial allocation is ten percent now. But again, I want to point out, nineteen point eight acres of land is developed as commercial in Monterey Shores, but there's still a fifteen point seven six acres that remain available for commercial development. A lot of that's up in the Craw Bay area. They have a commercial component that, again, is allocated, but they have not built that yet. So again, three hundred and eighty-five platted residential lots, and that's actually, as of two thousand and seven, only fifty-nine percent built out. So you still have a lot of residential lots that will still be built over the years in that PUD.
But one of the interesting things is, you mentioned open space. There was three hundred and fifty-five acres to begin with, Monterey Shores, and there's a hundred and thirty, roughly a hundred and thirty-two acres that is dedicated to open space.
That's correct. That's correct. Thirty-seven percent, which is, which is more open space than is required in the PUD, so. Buck Island, that's our smallest PUD on the beach, actually, and you see there, it's in red. Land area, seventy acres approximately, twenty-seven point two three acres of open space. The commercial allocation is eight point six acres, which is twelve point two percent. I'll note, that exceeds the ten percent. The Board of Commissioners, on November eighteenth, two thousand and two, did approve a variance for Buck Island to increase their commercial allocation to twelve percent. So that is a process that Buck Island undertook and had successfully approved. Seven point four acre, seven point oh four acres were developed, that leaving about an acre available for development in Buck Island. And that acre lot actually is, is actually part of, part of the fun park proposal. So if that, if that were approved, then you'll see that basically max out their commercial development in Buck Island. Hundred and thirteen platted residential lots, eighty-eight percent of those are built out.
But if that's not approved, he's still got one point six two acres.
Still got one point six, so he could, he could put it.
Something else.
Yeah. I mean, but, yes, that's correct. And really, the challenge isn't necessarily the fact that it's zone commercial because they have, they have the right to have one point six two acres zone commercial. The challenge is, anytime you put a use on that commercial, you've got to get a special use permit and all that, and that's. Ocean Sands, that is our biggest PUD. That's a really, really big PUD. And when you look at the numbers on that, six hundred acres, two hundred and ten acres of open space, this is almost, this is incredible when you think about it. Commercial allocation is sixty-seven point eight acres. That's eleven point three percent. That is per a settlement agreement that the county had with Ocean Sands that came out of litigation, so there's not a whole lot of legal room in that. The four point seven eight acres that's developed in Ocean Sands is actually just the parcel where the real estate office sits. And that, debatably, that's not going to be real estate office forever, but you're looking at sixty-three acres right now available for commercial development in Ocean Sands. That's a lot of, a lot of acreage that's available now. It doesn't have to be commercial development, but that's what's on the table. You have one thousand two hundred and fifteen platted lots in Ocean Sands. Eighty-five percent of those are built out. I'll note that in Ocean Sands, some of the open spaces are undeveloped land. They have the option of doing commercial, or they could do residential, so you have some flexibility in those. You could see hotels. It's a big PUD, and there's a lot of land left in that, so.
Yeah, and another part of the settlement agreement is, at Ocean Sands, he can go how high? high?
Seventy-five, I think. Seventy or seventy-five?
Which would be seven stories?
Six, six, probably.
Probably six.
Six stories, and everywhere else is 35-foot?
Mm-hmm.
And it also envisions the opportunity, is there, whether the developer seeks to take advantage of it, a hotel in Section T and a hotel in Section G.
And this court settlement was 1987?
1987.
Currytuck Club, one of our newer PUDs. Currytuck Club is 582 acres. It's a large one. Open space is 270 acres, a 46%. Their commercial allocation right now is 27 acres, so about half of their commercial allocation is actually allocated. 26 acres is developed. You have actual commercial uses. That still leaves 31 acres that's available for commercial development in Currytuck Club. Don't know that they'll do that, but it's, the fact is, they still have the ability to develop 31 acres for commercial uses. They have 535 platted lots, and about in 2007, 45% of those were built out. Last PUD's Pine Island, south end of the county. Land area, 385 acres. Open space, 145 acres, 37%. Commercial allocation is 37 acres. That's 9.7%. They've effectively designated all their commercial area in Pine Island. But again, I'll note, 15 acres of it's developed. 22 acres remains available for development for commercial on Pine Island. 291 platted lots. 98% of those are built out in 2007. That, that's all I have. That's just an overview of each of the seven PUDs on the beach. Lot of information, but what the planning department will do is we'll put this on the website tomorrow. So if anybody wants to pull it up and just kind of look at the PowerPoint, it'll be there on the website for folks to look at.
I think certainly our residents that live in Corolla will be quite interested in that. So how many total acres of commercial are left?
165.
165 acres of commercial.
Which, which is surprising to me, because it's hard to imagine where you could find 165 acres, but that's, that's, that's the stat. That's the number. Don't, not to say that 165 acres of commercial is going to develop in the Outer Banks, but it's important to note that based on the zoning requirements that have been in effect since the early eighties, that is what's permissible.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Woody.
You're welcome.
Item 12 is consent agenda.
Wait for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. I'm sure that you probably want to discuss briefly the...
Go ahead, I'll get down to comment in a second.
Oh, you will? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. Item 13, Commissioners' report. Ms. Taylor?
Kind of hesitated there. Always got something to say. I'll make it quick. Said it a couple ti, a couple meetings ago. Pulling from my Moayak Volunteer Fire Department, second Saturday of every month, they're having an all-you-can-eat pancake breakfast for $5 from 8:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and this Saturday is the second Saturday for that. Also, I've been getting phone calls, because Moayak, we hate water because we love to flood, but I know we already have imposition that you cannot intentionally impede the flow of stormwater. My question is, do we have anything that says if this ditch is on your property, you are responsible for it not impeding the flow of stormwater? And if we don't, can we work towards that?
Looking at the nuisance ordinance right now, I believe there's something in there, if I'm not mistaken, might address that. Everyone holding things up now, I will take a look at that and let the board know.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Man?
Nothing.
Mr. Roy?
Just going to let people know that it's always good to get out and talk to your various elected representatives. Couple of them are coming this, we are actually, probably more than a couple, but Representative Walter Jones will be up here this weekend, this Saturday, out at the Extension Center, Saturday afternoon, 1 to 4. So you folks are inclined to come out and join him in an ice cream social. I think he's going to be a good speaker, too, but it might be an interesting afternoon, so we encourage you to do so.
That it? Mr. Gray?
Mr. Chairman, we adopted this resolution a while ago in the marine fisheries, and I'd just like to say just a word about it, but this resolution opposing the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries new rules on gill net fishery. And I want us to, to, this is a ruling that was just made, but it's, it's a mandatory ruling that comes up May 15th, all these fishermen have to abide by. But, and it reads, "The lawsuit was recently filed against the commission, the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries and Director Louis Daniel in federal court by the Duke Environmental Law and Policy Clinic on behalf of Karen Beasley Sea Turtle Rescue and Rehabilitation Center." The lawsuit claims violation of the Endangered Species Act regarding unauthorized sea turtle interaction with gill nets. I want to read you a letter I got from one of the fishermen, and this is affecting all fishermen in our area, and it's probably going to put some of them out of business. But I got it this letter this week. And it says, "Prior to this year, we have been able to set 3,000 yards of net over five-and-a-half-inch mesh with no depth, no limit on depth. I was able to fish seven days a week when the weather permitted. These new rules limit me to four days and only nighttime sets with no consideration for weather. I don't know anyone that can make a living like this. These regulations are being put into effect to protect sea turtles. I have fished Currytuck and Alamo Sands for 20 years and have never seen a sea turtle. I have 10,000 yards of gill, yards of net all over 15-mash depth regulations, which means if this passes, they are trash. Gill nets cost $150 each. This is $15,000 out of my pocket, and the economy is as bad as I have ever seen. I think some warning should have been given so that we would have had time to use up the equipment we have and prepare for the new regulations. This is a very serious situation that we have been forced into. These regulations are taking our jobs away from us, and it's being done without notice. We, the fishermen of Currytuck and Alamo Sands, would greatly appreciate any consideration and help you could give us. Is the state prepared to reimburse us for the equipment they have decided is now illegal?" But this is something that's unprecedented, being what they've done. They've never before sent these restrictions down that had to be done next month. May 15th is the deadline. All these fellows have already got their net. They're already prepared for a year or more worth of stuff. In the past, they've always given them a year or two years on the deadline, so they'd have a chance to use up what they had. But, but it's going to put some of these fellows out of business, and it's just, just an awful burden that they have placed upon them. And I'd just like to see this board, besides these resolutions going up tonight, is also send a letter to Mark, Senator Bassnight, and Representative Bill Owens. And also, I would encourage Dan tomorrow to call Senator Bassnight and touch base, and Ike, you need to write these letters to Bill and Mark. But Dan, you, you need to call Mark's office tomorrow and stress how bad this is on fishermen here in Currytuck. And I would encourage all the commissioners to touch base with Bill Owens and Mark, too. There are some commissioners here that know those fellows really well, and it would, it would really serve our people well if we all can give them a call. Because this, this is, this is about the worst deal I've seen come down, as far as taking people's livelihood away from them.
I don't believe they even had a public hearing.
No, it's just something, they're just up in there.
Well, they, they got the lawsuit, the threat of the lawsuit, and they went into a meeting and come out of a meeting and said, "This is what they're going to do," trying to make the lawsuit go away.
Yeah.
There ain't been a sea turtle in Currytuck Sound in my lifetime.
No sea turtles out there.
But they're doing it for the whole state because of what's happened down in Pamlico.
Yep.
And it's just not right.
It's not.
Yeah, I'd also suggest, Mr. Gray, I asked Ike about if there's a possibility that the governor could put an executive order, at least giving the fishermen some time to react to this. I agree with you, this thing could be horrible now.
We, we need to act in a hurry, because it's right here. January, you know, May 15th is, is right here.
Yeah.
Well, I've, I talked to some people in the fisheries, and, and they kind of feel like the reason they've gone, put it out to May 15th, so that somebody on the other side can initiate some litigation, so that it, they can stop putting these, these rules in articles. My understanding, they don't really want to put these rules. The, the bottom line is, is you got, you can fish your net from 7:00 p.m. till 7:00 a.m. You got to have all your nets fished by 7:00 a.m. and out of the water.
All night, you got to fish all night.
You got to fish at night. And you can't, there's just no way you can do it. I mean, it's...
Creates public safety.
Yeah, you cannot do it. So it's effectively shutting down our commercial fishermen.
And see, when this lawsuit went in against them, they, in response to this lawsuit, the commission voted to repeal measure they had adopted under February 18th. They had just adopted measures February 18th. You know, ensuring the fellows, they were okay.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, they get this.
It's not right. Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing.
I have one comment, Mr. Woody. We know that the Mid-County Bridge is coming. We know approximately where it's going to land in, in the idlet area. We know approximately, well, we're not really sure on the Outer Banks. But isn't it time that we start looking at the idlet area with one of the small plans like we did in Maple, to, to protect that area before we start getting speculation and, and things happening that we don't want to happen?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's on our work plan, and we were, obviously, we wanted to see the environmental impact statement, which is out now. It would be ideal if it, if it gave us the Outer Banks terminus location, but if, if the board would like us to go ahead and proceed, we can certainly put together our steering committee, and we can at least start with the idlet side in the meantime.
I would like to see that start, because we know the terminus is either going to be here or here. But we need to start protecting that, and I would like to know that, like you to know that Coin Jock Auto, with this new alignment they're proposing there, Tim Cage, they're essentially going to not condemn his business, but they're going to shut it down with the roads where he effectively will be run out of business without them having to buy his business, and that's just wrong. That is absolutely wrong, to realign the roads just so they don't have to buy the business, but they're going to take enough out of it that they shut him down and leave him with useless property. And the, the board needs to stand firm on, on those terminuses. I believe it's Terminus A was the one that allows no ingress and egress. Correct?
Yeah.
We need to restate that as our position.
Need to hold that. That's what they promised us for years. That's what we need to hold to.
And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Jim McFaraby from Shawboro. He was appointed to the toll authority, North Carolina Toll Authority. So we do have somebody in Currytuck that is on that toll authority, so we need to make sure that he knows the ins and outs of what we're talking about. That's all I have.
Let me say one more thing about roads, Paul. I had a couple of people talk to me today about Papa Branch Road, and that is one bad road. You know, it come back in '08 and '09 on a DOT format, it's having to be redone, widening and strengthening, and we didn't, we haven't even had a meeting with DOT this year, as far as nine and 10 is concerned, but the, the road is breaking up. That is one awful road. I rode through there some time ago, and, but these folks really brought it back to my memory today. That, that is one bad road. And we need to send a letter, we need to go ahead and send a letter to DOT and ask them where that is, Dan, and it's, it's all scheduled, ready to be done, but nobody's moving on it, and it needs to be done. There's, there's a tremendous lot of traffic on Papa Branch Road now.
Last time they resurfaced it...
Tell me about it. There's traffic down there now.
They widen the road without doing anything underneath that last foot, and it just fell to pieces.
And it's cracking right off. It's breaking right off on the edges.
I would like for it to be a policy of the staff, whenever you send a letter that we asked y'all to send, that you send us copies of it, because I'm not getting copies of the letters that we asked y'all to send. I'd like to be able to see them myself.
Mr. Chairman. There is one thing I would like to comment on, please.
Yes, sir.
Last week, I've started getting some phone calls about drainage issues after that big rain.
Yes, sir.
And I've asked the staff to look into one issue of the e-goose a month, put some type of drainage update, so that the citizens will know that we're not just giving it lip service, but we are trying to move forward with drainage improvements when and where we can.
Yeah, I had a Mr. Hewitt contacted me. I know he contacted you. He was going to be here tonight for the upfront session to discuss ranchland, because the state went in there and figured out what has to be done, and they've never done it.
Never did, yeah.
And only part of that is in the Moayak Watershed District.
Yeah.
Part of ranchland. I think that's something else that we had looked at, too, is that you've got half of a neighborhood that's sitting within someplace.
I mean, you've got culverts that are, that are uneven, you've got ditches that need to be cleaned, you've got trees growing in some of the ditches.
Well, that's what I was asking. I know that you cannot intentionally impede the flow.
They're in the state right of way.
But...
Well, one of the farmers explained it to me. I never really thought about it, because I'm not a farmer, but he said, you know, for 30 years, there was, there was no problems, no real problems. Mr. Etheridge can probably relate to this, unless he's out in the fields. And the problem at the north end of the county was just the opposite, was at the south end of the county. The water didn't go down at the, at the north end, and that was good, because it kept the crops dry, I mean, wet. At the south end of the county, where we have all the sand, they needed the ditches, and the ditches were cleaned out regular because they needed to get rid of the water. But in the last three to four years, the, the climate has all changed, all that, and with all this weather we've got, in addition to that with the state not taking care of the ditches, because we, we had the facility here in Maple, and now the, the prisoners have left there, and we just don't have, because they regularly cleaned out Papa Branch Road up till about three or four years ago, and then, then that all ended. But, yeah, I get the same number of calls, about half a dozen a week, and mainly, the concerns are up in the Moayak area.
Well, it, it is the wettest at this time of year, I think, I've ever seen. And matter of fact, week before last, we cleaned out the ditches, had them redug on one farm, and after that four inches of rain, it looked like a lake out there in the field. There's just nowhere for the water to go. And, yeah, we can have the most elaborate drainage system there is, but the sands full, the swamps are as full as I've ever seen them.
Yeah.
And all you have to do is have one beaver build a dam in the swamp on some of these old creek-type things, and you're impeding water there.